And I believe we have two people signed up. I'm gonna ask the clerk to read the rules.
Citizen recognition. The citizen recognition portion of the meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the commission to do so. Each presentation will be limited to three minutes. The board is interested in hearing citizen concerns, yet speakers should not expect comment, action, or deliberation on subject matter brought up during this segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county agency. And we have two people on the list.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna first ask Robert Johnson to come up, state your name and your address, and have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Robert Johnson. I live at 1502 Lackey Street here in Shelby, North Carolina. I'm a veteran, and I've lived in Cleveland County for the last few years.
Down a little bit so.
Sure. Sure. I've lived in Cleveland County for the last few years. I previously lived in Cherubal. And in all the time I've been here, I've noticed a problem that we have with the homeless. And we have a group of individuals right now that are trying to break that chain and fight the fight for these homeless folks that we're looking at. The group, the organization is called Trailhead. I'm actually vice chair on Trailhead. My partner Gary Lay is here. And we're just trying to bring awareness to the problem. And we have a solution that we think might give some resolve for the county. We have acquired a building that used to be a shelter. And we're trying to move forward with that process. And the property used to be on Washington, it's still there on Washington Street. It's not the old mission, it's the old women's shelter. And we'd like to reopen that building for this winter for the homeless men in Cleveland County because right currently, there is no place for the men to go. Everyone thinks that there is, but unfortunately, there's not. The rescue mission has shut the men's portion down. So the men are out on the street. I have several men on the street right now that are sleeping in tents, in the rain, in the cold, hungry. We've been trying to meet that need. We've opened a center here, a day center. And we'd just like some support from the county to get behind opening our shelter with Trailhead. And if we could just get some, we went to the city council last night, and there was definitely some support there. And we've come to you tonight, hoping that we can get some support from you. Thank you very much.
Are you saying Trailhead?
Trailhead, yes ma'am. Trailhead Resources. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have Gary Lay.
Gary Lay, 922 Surrey Drive in Shelby here. Just to reiterate a few things that Robert said, we have, they say a homeless problem, it's gonna be a homeless crisis before too long. We've been dealing with individuals who have no shelter now, and winter's coming. And last winter, I was faced with the same situation when the men's shelter was shut down. Eventually, we was able to get the Cleveland County Rescue Mission to open up that building on Washington Street. If I would run it, I agreed. They shut it back down in March. Over those two months, we made progress with these individuals. We got them the treatment they needed, the addiction services they needed, the behavioral health, the medical issues that they needed. We were making progress, but unfortunately, a lot of that was lost because we had no place to keep them. So they sort of scattered. Trailhead is not necessarily an organization that looks to warehouse individuals. We want to transform them. So the purpose behind it is to identify the deficits, individual deficits that keep those people down, and give them an opportunity. Not everybody's gonna take it. I know, I realize that we're gonna lose probably more than we can save, but if we can save a few, it's worth it. And these are people's lives. They can become valuable members of our society, contributing members of our society, if given the chance and opportunity and the resources that unfortunately, they cannot access because of the barriers that are in place. So in cooperation with other agencies, we've got Washington Outreach Ministries with Reverend Weber has joined our efforts, as well as Dr. Rebecca Love and the Mental Health Association of Cleveland County. So the idea is to form a collaborative partnership amongst local grassroots agencies and try to make a difference. Because we do believe that community problems require community solutions, and that's what we're here to offer. And at this point, what we need is just support from the community and from the agencies and the governmental bodies here in Shelby. I'm from Shelby. I was born in Shelby. I moved back here and saw this need, and I feel like that at this point, now, we're not Charlotte. Now, you know, I know they've got a massive problem over there. The good thing about our town is it is an achievable goal. We can do it. We have the people here, I know the people here, I love the people here. They're caring people. We have an opportunity to show our kids, our neighbors, that we take this seriously and that we're gonna take care of our people. And these aren't just transits that are coming from Florida or, you know, stopping through here. These are people that were born in this county, and they need our help. And that's what we hope to provide them. And with your help, we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda, and I'm gonna call on Brian Epley, the county manager, to present that to us tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Bridges, members of the board. Several items for consideration this evening on your consent. We'll begin with item A, which are the minutes from your June 15 regular commissioner meeting. Those minutes are in your packet for review and approval. Also, item B is your monthly managers' reports, which includes all of our lateral budget transfers through the first quarter of FY '22. Also, a few highlights off of that report. We are well underway with our annual audit process, with our external CPA auditor Thompson, Price, Scott, and Adams, as well as working on the end-of-the-year financial report for the board that we hope to submit in early October. We mentioned this at our previous commissioner meeting, but we have received the first of our two distributions from the American Rescue Plan. That distribution was a tick over $9 million, and I, along with the finance staff, are working on a plan. The final treasury guidance only came out about two and a half, three weeks ago, so we're working on some compliance models that we can present to the board of commissioners at the appropriate time. Item C is a monthly tax administration report for collections from August 2021. Pleased to report that taxes collected through August are 52.7 percent, roughly about a percent higher than this time last year, so that department continues to perform at an exceptional level. Item D, also from tax administration, monthly abatement and supplement report for August 2021. Abatements total $91,482.92. Supplements total $22,219.24. Item E is from our planning department. This is a request to set a public hearing for Tuesday, October the 5th, and that'll be a text amendment to consider some changes to our water overlay or watershed districts here in Cleveland County. So again, just a request to set that public hearing for October the 5th. Item F is from animal services. This is some text code changes to Chapter 3 of that ordinance. The board of commissioners were presented with this first at your August 27 policy work session. The direction was then given after that first read to go back and codify those conceptual changes to the ordinance and bring those back for a second reading tonight. I would point out that in your packet, we're asking for the approval of the recommended language with two exceptions. The first thing that I would say is the licensing ordinance is not yet, the legislative language is not yet done. So all we're doing at this point is delaying the implementation to January 1, 2023. The language appears as if it was still the old ordinance, but we'll bring that language back certainly in the next couple of weeks. The second change is there's a couple spots where it talks about the animal services director providing oversight in an appellate process. The final version will include language in an intermediary step after the director to the Animal Services Advisory Board prior to going to the superior court level, which is currently the appellate process. Item G is from our legal department, and this is a request to sell county-owned property, parcel 26935, which is located at 416 East Ross Grove Road in Shelby. We've owned that since 2012. It's been through the upset bid process one time, and the bid was turned down because it was insufficient. The amount of money that the county has invested in the property is $1,983.35, and we're bringing a bid back to you now that exceeds that of $3,250. And the recommendation on the consent would be to approve the sale of that property. And finally, for consideration, item H is a joint resolution in support of a name change for Foothills Regional Workforce. And this resolution will be adopted by all of the members of that consortium, Cleveland, McDowell, Polk, and Rutherford. Obviously, this is previously the Regency Workforce Development and ISO Thermal. So that concludes your contention. Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions for the manager? If not, does someone like to?
I make a motion we approve.
Have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor? And a motion carries. Thank you very much. Brings us to a public hearing, and I'm gonna ask the clerk to read the public hearing rules.
After the public hearing has been opened, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposition will be asked to come forward and first state his or her name and address. All comments from the public are to be directed to the board. There are no comments directed at other members of the audience. If a speaker has a question, that question is to be directed to the chair. No one will be allowed to speak at the hearing more than once unless the chair recognizes a speaker a second time for rebuttal of information brought forth after the speaker has spoken. The original presentation by a speaker will be limited to no more than five minutes. Rebuttal presentation will be limited to no more than three minutes.
And I'm going to recognize Assistant County Manager Carrie Melton to present the Cleveland County Planning Board and Board of Adjustments/Revisions.
Thank you, board, for allowing me to be here tonight. If you recall, at your August 27 work session, the board adopted a policy governing appointed boards and commissions. As you're aware, county commissioners appoint over 100 citizens to 17 advisory boards. The policy that you adopted at your meeting on August 27 really ensures that all boards are subject to quality controls and ethical standards. Included in the policy are rules of procedures, including quorum, minutes, appointment of chairman, conflict of interest, and code of conduct. Also included in the policy is membership and purpose requirements for specific boards. So why I am here tonight, several of the provisions of this policy pertain to the Board of Adjustment, Planning Board, and the Historic Preservation Commission. Pursuant to Chapter 160D, which was recently adopted by the Board of Commissioners, the county's rules governing these boards actually must be adopted by ordinance following a public hearing. In your packet, you all had a, the amended ordinance placing into effect the provisions of the Cleveland County policy governing boards and commissions for both the Board of Adjustment, the Planning Board, and the Historic Preservation Commission. So in your packets included those changes. They were highlighted there in blue. So following the public hearing tonight, what we're asking the board to consider is adoption of these ordinance revisions. And I can take any questions.
Any comments or questions? If not, then we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Cleveland County Planning Board and Board of Adjustment Revisions, please come forward and state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Cleveland County Planning Board and Board of Adjustment Revisions, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing that one, I am gonna close the public hearing, and any questions or discussion from the commissioners?
I guess just a comment in looking over at what we did, I think it's gonna give us a broader scope of what, a better quality of people participating because we spread it out to certain ones to do certain thing that can give us a better idea of how the county should go. So, you know, I think it's gonna be a good move. And no other comments, make a motion if we accept.
And a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Now, we will move on to our regular agenda, and we're gonna talk about county-owned property. I'm gonna call, recognize Brian Epley, the county manager, to talk about parcels 10-462 and 10-490.
Thank you, Commissioner Bridges and commissioners up. Just a very brief update. Obviously, as you just saw on the consent agenda, typically, when there's county-owned property, we go through an upset bid process, and typically, we run those on a consent agenda because they're much smaller and we inherit through tax foreclosure or some other type of tax lien. This property is very different. General Statute 158.7, which is the Local Development Act, which was originally passed by the General Assembly in 1925, allows counties and municipal governments in North Carolina to speculatively purchase land for the purpose of industrial development, job creation, tax-based creation. And as you know, we've been highly successful at that in Cleveland County, especially in the last decade or so. This property, these two parcels, and you can see the larger parcel that kind of backs up to 85 there is about 54 acres. And then there's an additional five and a half, six acres that kind of runs parallel fronts, Kings Mountain Boulevard in between Unique Tex and Eaton. We bought those two pieces of property in 2009 and in 2012 for the purpose of industrial development. Again, I mentioned it's about 55 acres on the bigger parcel, almost six on the smaller one. There is a single-family residence there. Over the last six and a half, seven years that we've really started working on the property, the first couple of years that we owned it, it was really kind of stagnant because we had so many other projects in economic development happening. But we have ran geotechnical reports, we've done the delineation, our Phase 1 environmentals, we've worked on industrial development sites. And as you can see, the topography towards the back half of the property, which was the most attractive side to us, is exceptionally steep and really created a tremendous amount of earthwork in order to create a buildable pad suitable for the sweet spot in industrial development, which is typically a 100,000 square feet building, expandable to 200,000. That's what we've done with all of our shell buildings. That's what most of the requests for information that come through Department of Commerce are looking for. In this particular design, we were able to get those dimensions, but on 60 acres, only having one building is a pretty low utilization rate as far as net usable acreage and total turnout. And so, you know, as we've been sitting on it, we've been watching the economy, it's really came to the point where we're not sure that this parcel, these two joint parcels, are best suitable for economic development, industrial development. And so we've, with the board's permission, marketed that more broadly and have received a bid for $1.1 million. And so the point of tonight's presentation is not to, for the board to consider accepting that bid, or transactioning the property at this point, it's simply to begin the negotiated offer, upset bid process. We'll advertise this bid to the public for a period of at least 10 days, gather any bids that may be higher. The state statute requires it to be at least 10% higher, and then we would bring that back to the board of commissioners, whether we get an offer higher or we do not, to consider at that time. Just for a little bit of reference, we paid about $784,000 for the property, so that $1.1 million represents about a 40% return. And the tax value, in recognizing we just did a revaluation January 1st, is about $942,000, so even favorable there. The only other thing that I would add is we did look at some comparables around the property. There's an adjacent property, actually, that this board just rezoned directly behind Eaton here that sold for $7,000 an acre recently. And we looked around at several other parcels that we would consider favorable comps, and what we saw was an average of five to nine. We didn't find one that was over $9,000. This is $18,000 an acre, so it seems to be an advantageous offer. But again, the request tonight is simply to recognize the offer and begin the upset bid process so we can market that and solicit higher bids because we no longer feel that industrial development is the best use for the property.
Any questions, comments?
So if the board is supportive, we would look for a motion to begin that upset bid process.
I guess the only comment is, when we bought the property, we did look at it for industrial site.
Yes, sir.
But then following up and look at it, the topo of the property in the backfield and the different things makes it maybe not as attractive for an industrial site, but maybe more attractive for what we call it?
Residential development, yeah.
Residential. And the other area that was sold next to it had the same topo, had about the same topo as this has got. So that's what he's gonna use it for, residential.
Yeah.
So I would say that with what we're getting for it, we've increased our, I guess, our s-
Our return.
Return on it. And maybe we can invest this return on something else more suitable for the industrial site, or maybe with the Dover Mill site, we can use the money to invest there and be more beneficial to the county than hanging on to that particular piece of property, so.
Yep. And to your point, Commissioner Hutchins, the owner of this parcel, this adjacent parcel, is the person making the proposal or the offer.
Yeah.
So it would be intended for residential development if this transaction does occur.
I would make a motion that we do proceed with it.
Okay.
The upset bid process.
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
That was unanimous?
That was unanimous. Okay, and next, we're gonna ask Tiffany Hansen, our health director, to give us a COVID-19 medical update. But you can do this in your sleep, my male, huh?
I'm getting pretty good at it. Mr. Chairman, fellow board members, thank you for inviting me. Oh, I'm sorry. I try and be really loud, but I know that masks makes it a little muffled. So I just really wanted to give you all an update on where we are, where our numbers are, and kind of what we're doing at the health department. So this is the DHHS dashboard for COVID-19. We have just a little over 16,500 total cases throughout the duration of the pandemic. We still continue to average close to 100 cases per day. Actually, between yesterday and today, we saw 143 cases come in, so we're definitely hitting kind of record highs of daily averages. As we know, each one of those cases kind of comes with a risk value associated with our hospital systems, and so we evaluate every week really based on hospitalizations, the percent of those cases that require some level of hospital resource. So this graph really depicts as we've moved from July until now, the percent each week that requires some hospital resource or capacity. And so as you can see on that right-hand side, really, we're averaging between 25 and 35% of all of our weekly cases are requiring some level of hospitalization or hospital resource. Unfortunately, also, what comes with COVID-19 is some deaths, and so for the county, to date, we've had 275 residents pass away due to COVID-19. It's 1.7% of our total cases, or one out of every 60 people that get COVID-19, one of them is going to pass away. That graph there on this slide really depicts of the deaths we've had in the last five weeks, the number of folks each week that were fully vaccinated. And so we've had, out of the nearly 40 people that have passed away over the last five weeks, only five individuals that have been fully vaccinated, and all five of those individuals had multiple underlying health conditions that put them at severe risk for complications and severe illness. Vaccinations remain our number-one prevention strategy, and you all have seen this table from us a number of times. And so really, on the left-hand side there, you'll see Orange County with nearly 80% of their total population vaccinated, and they have only 211 cases per every 100,000 persons in their county over the last seven days. And comparable to Cleveland County there on the right, you know, we have a relatively low amount of our population vaccinated, only 40% are vaccinated. And as I mentioned, we have nearly 100 cases every day, so 700 per 100, or, yeah, per 100,000 over the last seven days. So although vaccinations remain our number-one prevention strategy, we want to make sure that we have lots of layered prevention deployed in multiple different levels. As I mentioned, vaccinations, the health department has kind of been trying to be agile and flexible as things change and the demands change in the community. And so an update from us, we're now doing vaccines Monday through Thursday, in person at the health department. You can call the 980-484-6019 phone number to schedule appointments. We do any dose, any day, any manufacturer, as those doses are available. And we do walk-ins if we can accommodate for those, as well as on the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see that there are a number of area providers also that are doing vaccines throughout the county, and most of them are on a walk-in or appointment base as well, and most offer all doses, all manufacturers. A little bit of an update, I know we've heard a lot of discussion around the Pfizer booster dose and what that looks like and what that may mean, or where we're headed. And so August 25 is when Pfizer actually submitted their paperwork to FDA for their third dose for the general public. Last Friday, the FDA advisory panel met to review their data and really voted to recommend emergency use authorization for the third dose of Pfizer for individuals that are 65 and older at risk of serious disease, including occupational hazards. So these are likely our first responders. ACIP, who actually makes all the immunization clinical recommendations, is scheduled to meet tomorrow or Thursday, and they'll really take that FDA guidance and provide us the clinical recommendations on who actually is gonna be eligible as part of that. And then at the health department, you know, we're prepared next week, as soon as we get ACIP recommendations, to begin administering to those that are eligible for Pfizer. As demands have also shifted in the last few weeks, that on the bottom is really weekly testing, and so we've seen a rapid increase from just about 600 tests a week to nearly 4,000. Just today, we actually got all of our at-home test kits in, and so we're gonna start distributing those tomorrow to students within the schools that are considered asymptomatic contacts, as well as anyone who is doing any type of screening. So a number of, like, events, travel, workplaces are requiring screenings, so we'll be starting to distribute those tomorrow. We've also partnered with StarMed, and so that flyer is really depicting through the end of the year, StarMed will be at the health department every other Saturday, conducting testing. And then we continue to evaluate internal capacity, really to try and meet the demands of the community, to be able to offer more testing at the health department. Any questions for me?
I have a couple.
Yeah.
You said that all the ones have went to the hospital, that, you know, and the resources. What is the treatment protocol to stay out of the hospital?
So to stay out of the hospital or to get out of the hospital?
Well, no, to, I mean, like, I've had several people say they've went and tested positive, not necessarily at the health department, but at different places, and were given absolutely nothing. No medication, no anything.
So there's not a number of preventative measures that clinicians necessarily could prescribe. They really treat the symptoms that people are having. Sometimes it's, you know, Tylenol, different things like that, but it's really up to the individual provider on what that treatment may look like, depending on the severity of the illness. There are a number of kind of tools in the toolbox that clinicians can use. There's monoclonal antibodies, depending on eligibility. We've heard remdesivir, a number of hospitals are using that. But it really depends on kind of history, severity of the illness, and the clinical provider, and kind of what their recommended best practice is for their patient.
And of the, you said of the five that passed away that were fully vaccinated, they had multiple underlying issues?
Yes.
What about the 35 that weren't vaccinated? Do we know how many of those were?
I do have probably the data on those that have underlying health conditions. I did not bring that with me, Deb, but I could get that for you.
Okay.
Any other comments?
How about the, where we're vaccinating 12 to 17? Do we know how many? Has any of those been, children been hospitalized?
They have not been hospitalized.
Nobody here has been hospitalized in that age group.
Do we have plans to maybe go into the schools and vaccinate those 12 to 17-year-olds whose parents approve?
Yes, we actually started in-school vaccine. Yes, we actually started in-school vaccination clinics today. So they started at Crest High School this morning and Crest Middle School this afternoon, and they'll be moving through all the middle schools and high schools this week and into early next week.
And is the person that is vaccinated and gets COVID, are they as contagious as a person unvaccinated?
So research indicates that people who are vaccinated that catch COVID again do have a level of transmission. Viral load is indicated to reduce substantially, and so, meaning that they can transmit for a certain amount of time, but what we know from research is it's less time than people who are unvaccinated.
There is contagious, just for a shorter period.
Right.
Are you having a lot of the parents interested in having their children vaccinated?
We have had several that have taken advantage of it. We actually offered the vaccine clinic late last school year in May, and we did it just at the high schools, because that's when it was approved, kind of for 16 and above, and we had about 40 at each school take advantage of it. I talked with our school health nursing supervisor today, and we're seeing just a little bit slightly higher than that number taking advantage of it this time around.
So when they test positive at school, they, do y'all recommend they go to their local provider, or what happens?
Yeah, so we provide the CDC and NC DHHS Toolkit guidance, which really is, you can see your local provider if you're symptomatic, and they can recommend testing, you can seek out testing if, in fact, that's what the school nurse recommends based on the symptom list, but ultimately, we recommend that if they have any concerns to contact their local provider.
I had something, if I could. How many practitioners are doing the monoclonal antibody treatment right now in county?
We're just aware of two.
Okay. Are y'all getting the word out on that as well, everybody?
So we've tried to really share, the state has a resource that connects to the monoclonate, monoclonal antibody infusion centers, it's Atrium, and then there's a provider out of Kings Mountain, so we've been trying to share that, but I know Dache has been working on additional resources to be able to get that out more.
Yeah, that can save a lot of lives. Dr. Carl is doing that.
Definitely.
Question?
Sure.
In looking at all the information that you've put out, and looking at what we need to do, what can we do to help? Can you give me, say, the number one thing that I'd recommend could help us the most would be A, number two would be B, number two would be C, number, hold down the line. Could you start with one and tell me which would be the best method of fighting the situation?
Sure. So the number-one prevention strategy remains vaccinations. We know that the vaccine reduces severe illness and hospitalizations 80 to 90% of the time, even at 100% in some studies that have been conducted lately. So, you know, vaccines remain the number-one prevention strategy, followed closely really by social distancing, mask mandates, making sure that we're having good sanitation practice, good respiratory etiquette. All of those things coupled together really help us to mitigate and reduce our risk.
Thank you.
Anybody else have comments? Tiffany, we appreciate the job you're doing and realize how stressful it probably is through all the departments, at the Health Department now, trying to keep up with all this, but we're happy with the job you're doing. We appreciate all you did.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to board appointments, and I'm going to ask the clerk.
Yes, we have one board appointment for this evening. It's for the Gaston Community Action Board. I just want to give you a couple of highlights about what this board is. It's been a while since she all as a board have appointed to them. So Gaston Community Action serves families and individuals in Gaston, Cleveland and Stanley County. They're comprised of public officials, their representatives, community leaders, and those who represent the indigeneous, poor communities in the area. So they come together and they advocate on behalf of those, and part of their programs include the Head Start, community development, tax assistance, financial assistance, job placement, things like that. So that is what this board does, and that's what you all are appointing as a Cleveland County representative. So you have the list of applicants in front of you. You will need to appoint one person for a three-year term set to expire June 30th, 2024. All applicants on the list have been reviewed by the Gaston Community Action Board liaison and board members, and everybody on the list will meet their recommendations and requirements.
Commissioners, do you want...
Move to approve our appoint, Phyllis Williams?
Second.
All in favor? Can I ask you names? Thank you very much. I think that brings us toward the end of our meeting. Does any commissioners have anything they'd like to report? Or any staff, any like to report to the board? If not, then I'm going to ask for a motion to recess, to reconvene until Friday, September 24th at 9:00 a.m. at the American Red Cross, 1333 Foston Roads, for a commissioner's report session.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.